Looks like everyone's here, so I'm gonna start just a minute early. I'll take the heat for it, I guess. If we could all stand and for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who hold it for which it stands, one nation, founded on God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Could the quick please call the roll?
Heidi, Clinker, Reynolds, Campbell, Brown, Allersmeyer, here, Williamson, here, Downing, here, Meyer, four in present.
Thank you. I believe we need to adjourn for the purpose of a public hearing on ordinance 2014-20. Mr. Campbell.
I think you said adjourn.
I'm sorry to-
I'm all for it.
Recession, temporarily recess. So moved?
I'll second it.
Then moved and seconded to temporarily recess for the purpose of the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in recess for purposes of hearing ordinance 2014-20. You wanna-
Sure. An ordinance for an additional appropriation of local roads and streets fund 2014.
This, I believe, is an ordinance that we passed on first reading last month, and so we're here to take a public comment on that before we proceed any further. Mayor, anyone wanna address this ordinance at this time? The ordinance also will be addressed then for the second time when we get into our regular session, second readings. Anyone like to address that ordinance? All right, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene Mr. Campbell.
I move.
Mr. Clinker.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now back into the regular session of the council meeting. Approval of the minutes from September 8th, 2014. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Campbell.
I move those minutes to be approved as communicated.
All those, well, are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Presentation, disposal of claims.
There are none.
Petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of city offices.
Water Works Department, August, Police Department, August, Water Pollution Control Department, August.
Thank you. And as a reminder to members of the audience, those reports are on file with the clerk's office and available at regular business hours for your review. Ordinance is for second reading, ordinance 2014-20.
An additional appropriation of the local roads and streets fund 2014.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2014-20.
Thank you, Ms. Allersmeyer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider this ordinance 2014-20. Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mike Jones, Controller. As was mentioned earlier, we are asking for an additional appropriation of $500,000 from the local roads and streets fund to go to the paving projects that we have currently going on. Obviously, it's well documented what the winter did to us, and so we have a rather lengthy list of projects to clean up. Over the last several years, we've been quite frugal and been able to save. This money comes from cash reserves. It's not any new taxes. Some of the things we've done, we've bought used equipment rather than new. We've renegotiated contracts that we had quotes on and such, and over the years, that has accumulated, and I would ask your approval to get this extra funding.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Jones on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments from council members? Any comments from the numbers of the audience on 2014-20 for the additional appropriation of local roads and streets? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed on second reading. Next ordinance is 2014-21.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 2013-36 on ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2014, excluding the swarm of protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Campbell.
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 2014-21 on second and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the ordinance. Any comments by council members? Comments by the mayor or Mr. Jones?
Jenny Leschne will start. We'll continue with that.
On the salary ordinance? Okay, yeah, or on this? Okay.
Good evening. Jenny Leschne, City Engineer. In looking at our staffing needs over the past several years, we've made some reorganizations in our departments, specifically in our building department. We promoted a building commissioner and added additional staff in that arena. We also added a construction administrator, mainly for the purpose of these large construction projects that we're getting ready to undertake, Sagamore Parkway, South Eighteenth Street, Old Romney Road. And in this particular budget, we have been increasing our revenue over the years with our increase in fees for building permits and for right-of-way permits. And in this budget, what I'm requesting for position this time is a right-of-way inspector. Right now, we currently split some of the duties of a right-of-way inspector through the water and the wastewater departments. South Street to the south goes to one inspector, and South Street to the north goes to another inspector. What we've found is that those people in the water and the wastewater department have other duties in addition to that, and so the right-of-way permits get the last attention. So what's happening is there are a lot of street cuts with all the private utilities, Vectren, Metronet, Frontier, and all of those private utilities, and some of those street cuts are not getting the attention that they're supposed to get during inspection. And so we'll have failures, so we'll have situations where things weren't repaired correctly, or some of those street cuts aren't getting that attention. So what my hope was, was to be able to have a right-of-way inspector and be able to do that and keep up on all of those right-of-way and street cuts and things. In addition, we are able to charge the private utilities for multiple street cuts in short segments of street. But we can only do that if we track those regularly and we collect all of that data and look at that in relation to our paving lists and projects that we have coming up and be able to prorate those costs for those private utilities. So we are missing a lot of revenue because we don't have that staff or that person in place to be able to monitor those types of costs. I believe I looked at just one segment of projects that Vectren did last year, and I just calculated Columbia Street, and I assumed that we would pave Columbia Street within the next three years, and that prorated cost was almost $30,000 that we could have been collecting if we are scheduled to pave the street within the five-year window. So there's opportunities there that we're missing, but also, we wanna make sure that when this street gets repaired, it stays repaired. We don't have failures, and we don't have to keep hounding utility companies to come back. We wanna make them do it right. So that was my intention, having a right-of-way inspector. Also, that right-of-way inspector would be working on our street paving during the paving season. So that person would be out coordinating with property owners, scheduling the tree trimming and the street sweeping ahead of the paving crews, making sure the milling is done correctly with drainage, and actually have that person on the street during the street paving as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the city engineer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudine, Lothman Park Superintendent. And what you have before you is the elimination of the amusement manager position, which the job duties of that position have been absorbed internally. Actually, three years ago, I believe it was, the zoo director, I was the zoo director at that time, absorbed many of the responsibilities with that position, and since that time, the aquatic side of that position, those responsibilities have been absorbed internally. And what we have opted to do is create a director of facilities and grounds position, which oversees our entire maintenance department at the parks department. And in doing so, that was to streamline our responsibilities and make it more efficient, and I believe that we can successfully do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the park superintendent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, mayor? Any comments by council members on this ordinance? Any comments by members of the audience on this ordinance to amend the salary ordinance for these positions?
Floyd Wells, 3717 Rawlings Drive. I just have a question on this right-of-way superintendent. Well, this right-of-way superintendent being inspecting all of the right-of-way or just the street right-of-way, the easements, so forth, that like Metronet is putting, punching holes in the ground in all the neighborhood, and we're glad that they're installing it. But on the other hand, in our neighborhood, for instance, they've ruptured two gas lines. Neighborhoods had to be evacuated once, and I'm just wondering if that inspector plays a role in that.
Those are all inspected. They're making mistakes. They're making them feel because they have to see their plans that we approve. It shows all the right-of-ways, and so those are field mistakes, but those are already inspected and approved before they go out.
This new inspector, though, this new position, is that part of, would that be part of that person's duties?
It's just helping with everything, actually. They're just gonna be focused on a lot of those.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this ordinance?
I guess I have a question. Have you reported any problems that they have created that have not been brought back to where they, the condition that it was in before?
Not yet. All I have so far is promises.
Okay.
I've reported it to Metronet. I've been assured that it would be taken care of. It hasn't, and so if it doesn't, you will hear from me again.
Well, I think that there are people that are dealing with that, and those are the ones who should be made aware of it.
Okay, I'm not sure where to go with it.
Floyd, if you would send us a reading, we may already be aware of it because we're keeping track, and they're going back at certain times, but we may be aware of it. Just to have you come up and check.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good enough.
Any other questions of council? We'll have a roll call vote then on ordinance 2014-21.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Now we're moving on to ordinances for first reading. Many of these are budget and salary-related items, and so we'll probably be hearing mostly from the city controller and from the mayor. First ordinance 2014-22.
An ordinance fixing the salaries of elected officials in the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2015.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Heidi.
I move for passage of ordinance 2014-22.
Mr. Downing, very good. Moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-22. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, does the council have a pleasure? Would you like me to make my larger presentation on the overall raises with this first ordinance, or would you like to do very short and then a larger presentation when we go to the other employees?
I move to cover them all.
Probably a larger presentation would be helpful.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
All right, thank you. As you know, each year, we take a comprehensive look at not only the city budget, but our salary structure within the City of Lafayette. We look at the pay structure. We look at the classifications within those structures, as many of you know from a long time on the council. We have several classifications, LTCs, comets, PATs, supervisors. We look at all of those. We look at them for a variety of reasons. One, we wanna make sure that we're being fair with our employees. We also need to make sure that we're competitive in a marketplace. We do lose employees because we have some extremely talented people working here at the City of Lafayette. Dan Crowell gave an example today, which, you know, we applaud this young man, but we're losing someone from the street department that actually is getting a supervisor position at Alcoa. So we have some really talented people. So we look at it from a classification standpoint, job description, duties and tasks, and competitiveness in the work marketplace to keep and retain our good employees. And like I said, we really do have a tremendous number of good employees. We also look at how that interacts with the overall budget and the overall needs of all those pieces within the budget. As you know, we're constrained by growth quotients and by property tax caps, and so the controller has to take all of those into consideration and what other needs might be, particularly in the general fund, where the police and fire departments are located, which are the two largest segments within the City of Lafayette. You kinda take all of that, and you begin to break that down and how it fits into the overall budget, and you come up with what you think is fair. We make adjustments from time to time, two classifications within the budget process. If we see a position that is worthy of rising to a different level because of skill sets or certifications that have been taken through the course of the year. And we have a lot of employees that do that. We're very big on continuing education and continuing to improve your skills. So you riddle any changes that need to be made, and then you look at the overall process. And when we did that this year, we came up with a 2% raise across the board. Obviously, we would like to do more in some respects, but we think a 2% is fair, and we think a 2% allows us to live within our means, balance our budget, and also ensure that we have the necessary revenues to do other activities that need to be done within the City of Lafayette. And so I am recommending a 2% raise this year for all city employees.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of the mayor by council members? Mr. Clinker.
Does that, 2%, will that typically cover the all employees' health insurance cost increases?
It, in general, has. I don't think anybody's ever went backwards. I can't say for sure. There might have been a couple of years, as you know, when we took over, we were in a serious financial situation here at the City of Lafayette, and we worked ourself out of that. So several of those first years, as you remember, there were zero, and there were 1% raises. Those did not cover healthcare costs, but in the last several years, we've been able to give raises where people either broke even or moved ahead a little bit. I think this year, I'm not gonna report on it tonight because Mike and I aren't quite ready, but I think within the next week, we're gonna have some good news on our healthcare costs and some good news what that will mean for our employees, and I think when you calculate all that in this year, everybody will move forward.
Does this salary ordinance contemplate the creation of any new positions, or is that gonna be discussed when you talk about the budget?
I'll discuss that when I go through the budget line items.
Okay. Any other questions by council? Any questions or comments by members of the audience on ordinance 2014-22 regarding the salaries?
Perry Bobby, 3700 Red Bed Avenue. I think, is this just for the overall raise, or just for the elected officials? With that said, where I work at, we do a self-validation. Where we rate ourselves on how we performed for that prior year. Does the city employees do that?
Official answer, speaking of the microphone. Yes, the city employees don't necessarily evaluate themselves, but city employees are evaluated throughout the year. In the police department, they're evaluated twice. They're evaluated in the different departments. So yes, there are employee evaluations that are done in the departments throughout the year.
I feel like, as your boss, I feel like we give you your raise every four years, and I don't feel like elected officials deserve a raise. I've been going to doors, talking to grandmas that's on fixed income, talking to people that's wanting income. I'm sorry. I gotta say, no way. I hope you guys consider, think of the other guys. Think of the grandma. Think of the mother with five and a half kids, one paycheck. Think about those folks, right in your districts. I know I am. That's why I'm learning next year for city council.
Thank you, Perry. Any other comments from other members of the audience? Any comments from council? We'll have a roll call vote of the councilmen.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
No.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to one.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-22 passes on first reading. Next ordinance 2014-23.
An ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2015, excluding the swarm protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 2014-23 first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider 2014-23 on first reading. This is in cooperation with the presentation that the mayor just gave, and this includes a 2% raise. Any comments by council on this particular ordinance? Comments by members of the audience on this ordinance for the appointed officers and employees of the city?
Arnold Stanton, 1013 Luthers Street. I just wanted to know, is it ever considered to give the police and fire a higher raise?
Several years, no, not several years, but a few years ago, as you know, I, we evaluated the police and fire pay as it relates to other fire departments, police department of the state of Indiana to be competitive in the Midwest, and there was a year that we gave the police and fire departments a substantial pay increase over what the other departments were given to bring that pay in line. And then we created, if you remember, the 5% gaps then between the various staffing levels from journeyman to sergeant to lieutenant in the police department, patrolman first class to sergeant, and we keep those 5% gaps. And so we gave that raise a few years ago to get that where we believe it should be, and obviously, we'd always like to do more, but I believe our pay and our benefit packages and our equipment make us very, very competitive with any department our size anywhere.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by members of the audience on this ordinance?
I guess I would have one question, mayor. What is the staffing right now about the fire department and/or the police department?
The police department-
Just for point of reference, that is the next ordinance that we're gonna be discussing is number 24, which I don't really-
Oh, I thought this gentleman was talking about-
Go ahead. He asked about it. We're a little off the topic, but go ahead and ask it.
I got off the topic.
Hundred, we're at 138 is what we're allocated for the police department, and Chief Doyle, you gonna have to help me on the fire department? 138, what, 38 or 36?
37.
37?
Below that.
But that's your allocation. 139 and 137.
Thank you. Any other comments then on 2014-23, which is the appointed, the employees of the city, not police and fire? That'll be, we'll take that up at the next ordinance. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Ordinance 2014-24.
An ordinance fixing the salaries of the swarm protective occupation and law enforcement poll, members of the police and fire departments of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2015.
It's a pleasure of the council, Ms. Lee Williams.
I move for passage of ordinance 2014-24.
Mr. Downing.
My second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider 2014-24 regarding police and fire. Any special other comments by the mayor? Any questions or comments by council members?
I'll go again.
Yes, sure.
Didn't quite answer.
Now we're on topic.
Are there any, is there need for more firemen and police? Or are there any in the pipeline or anything?
Well, I mean, we're always filling spots from retirements and things like that, and both departments have a well-documented, time-tested process for doing that. Neither, we are not creating any new positions in the police or fire department this year within the 2015 budget. You know, we've created several new police positions, and last year, did several with the cops grants and stuff, and the chief and I have talked, and he believes he has the manpower, and so we're not creating any new positions within the budget. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council? Any comments by members of the audience on the salary ordinance for police and fire? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Staying, do you have a family member on the police department? Very good. Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. What's one extension?
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Now, the ordinance 2014-25, which I believe is the 2015 budget. You wanna read that?
2015 budget ordinance, an ordinance appropriating money for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the city government of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the first physical year beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015, including the outstanding claims and obligations and fixing the time when the same shell take effect.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Clinker.
I move, we hear 2014-25.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, before you, you have the 2015 budget that we have been working on for quite a while here now in City Hall. As we have in years past, we take a comprehensive look at historical data, future needs, projects, take into account contingencies that we know might exist, like bad winters and road projects. So we look at those frugal opportunities also to make sure that we're putting some money back, make sure that we have some of those cash reserves. As you know, last year, we also added to the rainy day fund. So we really take a very broad look at all of our expenditures. And then, just as a reminder, we really do then what's called zero-based budgeting. If you look closely at this budget, you'll see that we don't just add 2% to all the salaries and a certain percentage to all the insurance and a certain percent to all the gas, but what the controller does after meeting with all the department heads on different occasions and looking at all that data, we really look at each individual department and each individual line item to make a determination what that budget line item should be. And so as you go through the budget, you will see that many line items, some go up, some go down, even though you might look at it and think, well, that would go up. But historical data, future needs, changes in equipment, changes in responsibilities within the organization, task delegation to different members can change some of that. So we really do what's called zero-based budgeting each year, and I think that's very important, to make sure that we have a budget that meets the needs of the city, sets the standards that we wanna have, first and foremost, looking at public safety, then city services, and making sure that we have the resources and tools to do those things while also living within our means, taking into consideration potential appeals, property tax caps, tax collections that may not meet what we thought we were gonna get. I think it's important to remember that this budget, you know, is a snapshot in time, and even though some funds are certified when it comes to property tax collections, maybe you collect 98%, maybe you collect 92%, so there's a lot of things that we take into consideration as we prepare this budget. Before I start going through it, kinda department by department, the other thing I'd like to remind everybody is, we do the same thing to the best of our ability as we look at employees. Mike, working with the department heads, you know, we look at people that might change classifications. We look at potential retirements or people that did retire, and they'll run out of time. They're up here, somebody starts it, the new person will start at the introductory level. Sometimes we hire somebody that's married and has a family and they have the family insurance. Sometimes it's somebody that's single. Sometimes people get divorced and it changes. Sometimes people get married during the year and it changes. And so Mike does some calculations, looks at some historical data, and we try to best on what we know, make some of those decisions. So again, it's a snapshot in, in time. Nobody can exactly predict the future. So just a kind of a brief reminder there as we look through these, if it, you don't see two, two, think, well, I thought we were doing two percent. That's why some of them will be up and some of them, uh, will be down. Uh, if you want to kind of start there at the beginning, I'll, I'll hit the major highlights and then if there's something else you want to ask me, please feel free to do so. Uh, the first departments, mayor, clerk, controller, HR, and council have almost no increase in them whatsoever, extremely minimal. Mayor, clerk, and council has nothing, uh, controller has nothing but the two percent, the H, uh, council two percent, HR has some very minimal expense changes. The, the first significant change is in the facilities department. And if you look at the facilities department, you'll see that there is an increase, uh, from one LTC four maintenance technician to two LTC four maintenance technicians. And then a decrease from three LTC threes down to two LTC three maintenance technicians. Uh, that sounds a little confusing, so that's the technical piece of it, I'll explain it. We have two very, very talented maintenance technicians that work for the city of Lafayette that have both done a tremendous job in educating themselves, getting additional certifications. They save us a significant amount of money, uh, from having to hire outside contractors. Um, that, uh, one of the young men that's involved with us, Jason Pierce, actually went out and got his ADA, uh, certification to do ADA assessments that are required by the law of all our facilities, our swimming pools. We had got some prices from contractors to do that, people that had those certifications. And Mike and I are very comfortable in giving you a conservative number, uh, that that young man, by getting that certification and doing that in-house for us, easily saved us seventy-five thousand dollars in, in outside costs to have the whole city that we had to have inspected that he was able to do. Uh, so both of these gentlemen are very talented. And so we raised both of those to LTC fours and we think that's very appropriate within this budget. We cut back to LT, two LTC threes, but the reality is those positions aren't filled and haven't been. These two guys, I'm not sure how, but so far, they are keeping up and they are very, very good workers. And, uh, again, we need to be competitive. I don't want to lose them to someone else out in the marketplace because they've got a lot of skills that are very important right now. So, um, that's the change there in, uh, LTC three. Um, we have some change in engineering we've talked about earlier with a, with a, uh, contract, uh, with the construction manager and the right-of-way specialist. So there is some changes, uh, there in the engineer's office with those positions. Uh, but the change is not a whole lot because basically being paid out of fees. So, um, with some other position changes, that really balances out, gives us the people that we need, uh, and, uh, but that is a change in position, so I thought you should be aware of that. Uh, the next one I'll talk about that's got some significance is animal control. We did add twenty-five hundred dollars to the temporary salaries to increase, uh, weekend and vacation, uh, coverage. And so we did add a little bit to those temporaries to help cover. We do have people that got days off and vacation. We needed a little bit more there to, uh, try to cover them. In the police department, Mr. Campbell was asking about the police department. There are some changes in there that I'd like to discuss. One of them is that we have upgraded, uh, the status of the communications, uh, department, that's our dispatchers. They, uh, do a very, very tough job, that is very busy. Um, and again, we have some very skilled and dedicated folks that work down there under some very difficult circumstances. And so we have moved them up a classification. Uh, and the reality is also that we have some openings and we were, we simply really couldn't get people to apply. Um, we just were not competitive, uh, in the marketplace and we struggled to get some folks to apply. And so we have upgraded, um, the communications department by one level, uh, for the, for our dispatchers. And I feel that that is, um, very, very, very much deserved and we need to do that to remain competitive. The other item that's also in there that is a new position is a data application specialist. Uh, we may or may not fund that depending on how the revenues come in, but I wanted to make you aware that that position is in there. As you know, the police department and fire department has become increasingly technology based. We have in-car computers, in-car cameras. Again, we have all so much technology, it's unbelievable. And we only have one person assigned to, to taking care of all of that and they simply cannot keep up. And with the OSI software, all the CAD systems down in dispatch, nine-one-one, I mean, they simply cannot keep up. And so we, we have put a position in here, uh, we're going to be watching the revenues through the rest of the year, see how the tax collection is on December thirty-first. Uh, we'll look at the seventeen eighty-two when it comes back from the state and then make a final decision on that. But we appreciate the council's approval to at least put it in the ordinance because if the funding does look like it's going to work out when all that comes back and we all know for sure, uh, that is a position that we feel is important to fill. So, Mr. Kim, I guess I didn't answer your question quite right the first time. There is a position being added to the police department to assist, uh, with their, their operations, but it's not a sworn position.
No, they have iPads or computers, sir.
They, the police department.
It's not that fair.
This is, no, actually, that's a good question. You actually helped me on that. All the policemen have in-car computers, but they also have, um, iPhones. And because of changes in software and Chief Flannally, the name of the software that, Freedom? We have a new software package called Freedom through our OSI package. From their phone, uh, you will be amazed at what they can access and what they can do. And so, um, again, that's something that this new position can help with because, uh, they won't have to try to get back to their car to do many, many things. They won't have to leave the scene, leave a house, leave somebody in front of them, they can literally work from their phone. So, uh, good question, Mr. Campbell.
Uh, one other, uh, what about the, uh, television, uh, what do you call them? Were you wearing on your cameras?
Body cameras.
Body cameras, Chief Flannally.
I've heard some negatives about that.
Well, we've, we've researched those and the chief continues to research those. There's two or three companies that make those body cameras. And, uh, we're still trying to decide which company we like the best, which one we think integrates the best with our, our system. Um, because we're a large department, one of the first quotes that he got back was that our storage fee to store the data, the film, up in the cloud would be seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So, um, because we have a lot of people that would be wearing them. And so the chief is doing his due diligence. I know the chief, uh, supports though that technology, uh, but he wants to make sure that he buys the right brand, that he has policies and procedures to implement it appropriately and is clear to his staff and clear to the citizens of this community. And then also making sure that the expense that we will incur for that is a sustainable expense as we look at budgets going forward. And so, uh, he's in the due diligence period right now. Uh, sanitation, uh, the only.
Did you skip over the fire department?
You know, the fire department doesn't have a, a ton of, uh, a, a ton of changes in it.
Okay.
Um, about nine thousand dollars in incentives and five thousand dollars in instruction on all the rest is salaries and insurance and pensions. So there's really not a whole lot of additional changes in there, purchasing not much. Uh, sanitation, there is a ten thousand dollar increase in equipment repair. We did buy four new loadalls last year, which will help, but, you know, the other five or six are still several years old. And until we can buy a few more, and we hope we'll buy a few more new ones next year, uh, we will have some, uh, work to do. And so we did increase the equipment repair, uh, by ten thousand dollars. Human relations, there is no change. Uh, IT, uh, I talked about the police department, the IT guy trying to help, there's, that's the only, we did that last year. Motor vehicle highway, uh, it is up. Um, we looked at historic cost, we looked at last year's hard winter, um, who knows what winter's going to be. So we did increase that budget quite a bit just to be on the safe side. We have the cash to do that. Again, that's not new taxes, we have the cash to do that. So, um, in case we have a hard winter, we'll be prepared. You'll also see down in the, uh, uh, street department line, we've done some increases there in overtime, uh, repair, motor supplies, and gas expense. Some of that's just for normal wear and tear, but some of that is, again, if we have a really tough winter, a lot of overtime. Again, because we've been frugal, we have the, the cash that we can, that we can do that. So, um, those are some things that you'll see in the street and motor vehicle highway department. TID, which is traffic improvement division, there are some major changes in there that I want to bring, uh, to your attention. As most of you know, for the last several years, we have went to a computerized traffic management system where we now have eighty-nine of our signals on a computerized, uh, system, uh, that runs off a software package. And we are going to, uh, um, we have some line items for maintenance on that software package, but about fifteen thousand dollars that we need to do for next year. And then we have twenty thousand dollars in the budget to run fiber connections to four or five more signals. That'll get us up, uh, over ninety of our signals, uh, will be on, on fiber. So we do a few a year, trying to get them all on fiber. Fiber is much more reliable, it works quicker with the system, and we've slowly been doing that. So we hope to add four or five and get us up to ninety-three or ninety-four of our signals on that computer software management system, all connect, interconnected by fiber optics, which we think is, is good. Uh, really no changes in, in the parks. Uh, superintendent or staff has done a good job going through their, their lines, uh, increasing some areas, decreasing some areas. But at the end of the day, their increases really have to do just with salaries and insurance and those types of things. Uh, I wanted to give you a quick update, if you move down, all the way down to parking operations, um, wanted to talk about that a little bit. I am pleased to announce, since we've taken over parking operations, it is cash flowing and is cash flowing very well. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, we've increased our overall budget by fourteen thousand, uh, five hundred, uh, dollars because we, with some things that we're continuing to do. We're also continuing to expand the enforcement, uh, just starting to go outside the downtown boundaries a little bit into the neighborhoods, take some pressure off the police department to do some of those things with cars parked the wrong way, parked in handicap zones, parked in front of fire hydrants, all those things that need to be cleaned up. And it's hard for the police to get to sometimes, but, uh, the technology has allowed us to be extremely efficient. And so we have time now to, uh, move out into those neighborhoods, which we think is good for those neighborhoods. Uh, not everybody will be happy, obviously, but, uh, those things need to be done and we need to make sure those are enforced properly, particularly in our dear, near downtown neighborhoods where, uh, doesn't take too much to get parking out of whack. The other thing that's in there, and this again is from proceeds, you'll see that there is a thirty thousand dollar, um, line item in there. And that's for a standalone, um, pay station that we hope to put in the lobby of the Columbia building. As you know, the system that we currently have is a system where you pull up, put your ticket in, you have to pay with money and quarters and stuff there. So if it gets jammed or you're slowing everybody up behind you, so we would be going to a system like they have over at Purdue where you, in the lobby, you put in your ticket, you get it back and much quicker, much more efficient. Um, and we think we're going to be able to do that. I, I really want to give, you know, Mike Jones credit, he was the first one that came to me a couple of years ago and said, Tony, we can do parking better, we can do parking more efficient, we can maximize the effectiveness for downtown residents by starting an ambassador program in downtown visitors. And we can do some things that we're not doing now by taking this in-house and, uh, giving credit, the first year is right, so, uh, we'll, we'll hope it, uh, we'll hope it stays, we'll hope it stays that way because it has worked out very, very well.
Did you, uh, indicate earlier what kind of revenues we're looking at from that?
Well, um, we're paying all of our expenses, uh, we're, you know, we're not to the end of the year yet, we're paying all of our expenses. Um, we feel we're going to have the thirty thousand dollars to do the standalone, uh, out of, you know, that's not, this isn't, I'm, I'm reporting this to you because part of the budget, this is not tax money. Let me, let me make that clear. You know, this is revenue from, from what we do and tickets and parking garage, more people are using our parking garage. So this is revenue, but it is part of the, of, of the budget. So we, we're, we feel good, we're going to be to the plus. All right, that's the, an overview of the, of the changes. Uh, the other hundreds and hundreds of line items here are all the same. Uh, as I told you at caucus, and I'll, I'll reiterate here in the public meeting, uh, the overall budget, proposed budget for first reading for twenty fourteen is fifty-seven million, four hundred and six thousand and twenty-one dollars. That's up about four point six percent over last year. Uh, we really feel strongly before the next reading that will be lowered significantly. Like I said, I think we're going to have some good in, numbers on our insurance that we can share with you. And, uh, that will lower that number along with some other things. We think this is a good place, uh, to start. As I indicated, if you look at the line items of personnel, salary, per, and social security, health insurance, police and fire pensions, and gas, that makes up three point eight percent of that four point six. And so actual additional expenditures outside of those line items only, uh, are zero point eight six percent. So we feel this is a good budget, it's a good budget to move forward with. We will have a work session where we'll sit down and work on this. We'll trim this down, uh, before the, uh, before the final reading, but I think it's a very good budget for a first vote. And, uh, I want to thank Mike Jones, all his staff, the department heads, uh, everybody that worked hard to come in with a common sense, practical, uh, budget that provides for the needs of the citizens, gives our taxpayers good value for their tax dollars. I, I think we provide tremendous city service with our street sanitation, trash pickup, recycling, leaves, limbs, uh, snow removal, the parks. Um, I want to thank Dan Kroll and all his staff and everybody that's worked. I think they have done a tremendous job getting the streets paved, getting the streets patched, uh, working on the cracked ceiling. It was a tough winter, but, uh, I think they've done a tremendous job getting the streets back in good shape. And because with the help of all of you, we have been frugal, we haven't spent when we didn't need to, we have the resources, uh, to do that. So I think you can drive around other parts of the state and I, I don't think you'll see the roads in as good a shape as ours are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it does look like a pretty lean budget, so. Uh, questions from council?
Mayor, on, on the redevelopment, I noticed that they had an increase of eleven point eight five, roughly twelve percent. And again, a large part of that is a snapshot of the health insurance that you mentioned. Uh, is there anything else in there that we should know, uh?
Yeah, their budget's not very big overall, so that number goes up. They, they had a, uh, operational, the operational, actual operational increase is two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars to the temporary salary line for an intern. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This one.
Mr. Brown.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you anticipate any, uh, how can I put this, uh, blowback from the Department of, uh, Government, or Government and Finance on, on our budget?
Well, you never know for sure, uh, when you submit a budget, I mean, what the seventeen eighty-two will come back exactly like. Um, based on their calculations, also, I have great faith in, in Mike Jones and, uh, his staff. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll see, but we feel good about our calculations, we've been pretty close. Uh, it might be a, uh, a, a good time, I don't know, were you going to introduce Tim later? Oh, I can introduce right now, I, I also do want to introduce our deputy, our new deputy controller for the city of Lafayette, uh, Tim Clary has. Tim Clary, has joined our staff, we're extremely proud of that. He comes to us after twenty years with the State Board of Accounts. So, we're thrilled.
Out on our side.
Yeah. Thrilled to have him. He brings CPA, twenty years' experience with them, also some years in private practice. So, he's done our audit before, he's done audit over at Purdue. He brings a wealth of knowledge to our staff, and so, we are thrilled, thrilled to have him on board. So, Mike Jones has done a great job in his department, doing a lot of things, and I never know for sure, Perry, but I feel pretty good we're in the ballpark.
Well, good, welcome, Tim. Pressures on. Any other questions by council? Thank you, Mayor. Any comments by council before opening up to members of the audience? Members of the audience, the public, anyone wish to address the budget ordinance 2014-25? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
We're going to pass this ordinance 2014-26 on first reading.
Thank you, the ordinance is passed, eight to zero for first reading. Ordinance 2014-26.
Two thousand and fifteen GLPTC budget and ordinance appropriating money for the Greater Lafayette Public Transportation Corporation as required pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash seventeen dash twenty.
Pleasure to counsel, Ms. Eastfield.
I'm going to pass this ordinance 2014-26 on first reading.
Ms. Allersmeyer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-26. Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, Mike Jones, comptroller. Excuse me, this ordinance, as you mentioned, concerns the operating budget of City Bus. The reason it comes before this body is that when the property tax laws were revamped, it was determined that units that receive property tax, that do not have an elected board, must have their budgets reviewed by an elected body. Prior to 2014, this was done by the county, and the DLGF determined last year that it should fall under this body's governance. So, that's why they're here, and I'd like to introduce John Messinger from City Bus to discuss their budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Messinger.
Good evening. Thank you, Mike. City Bus's proposed 2015 budget is eleven million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred eleven dollars, and this is an increase of four percent from our current year. You were provided copies of the budget as submitted to the state, and then also a summary from us that described sources of revenue and the top ten budget expenses. And I'd like to just summarize that for you briefly here. The budget plans for a five percent increase in what is called program revenue. These are the funds that City Bus collects from fares, passengers on the bus, and from our contracts, and those in total cover about thirty-two percent of City Bus's budget. So, that competes well with other transit systems around the state, and that our recovery from locally derived revenue is about a third of our operating budget. We're also planning for a four percent increase in state formula funds. These are awarded based upon competitive basis around the state, factors including locally derived revenue, ridership, and other performance indicators, and I'm proud to say that City Bus performs as one of the top transit systems with the Public Mass Transit Fund. So, about a four percent increase in state funds coming to Lafayette through City Bus. A two percent, or I'm sorry, a two point seven percent increase in property tax revenue to City Bus was estimated by the DLGF, so that's factored into the budget. And we're also expecting about a four percent increase in county option income tax. On the expense side, we're budgeting a five point seven increase overall in personnel costs. This is going to include two new positions, one is an administrative position, the position of transit analyst, and then also, we're budgeting for an additional mechanic to take care of the fleet and facilities. We are planning for a reduction in fuel expenses, as next year we'll begin operating compressed natural gas buses. Construction will soon be underway on our CNG compressing and fueling station here off of Canal Road, and we hope we'll have five buses next spring running compressed natural gas, which will lower the cost per operating mile based upon a lower fuel cost. Over time, we'll be increasing the number of buses using CNG, and we'll, over the coming decade, see significant savings in fuel costs over using diesel fuel. The good news is that the budget does not call for any reduction in service, however, no expansion plans are budgeted, even though we are aware that there are many needs in the community that we're not able to serve right now, given the demand and supply. But, we do keep our finger on the pulse of the community, and are very interested in hearing about the needs that are out there. And hopefully, as we can reduce costs, for example, by using CNG fuel, we can redirect those dollars into service expansions down the road. That's a quick summary of our budget, and if there are any questions?
John, I just want to reiterate a conversation I think you and I had a while ago, and I think also with Mr. Senate, that I did get some inquiries about people asking for service, best service out to the hospital. And at that time, I think you had indicated that the ridership just didn't really justify it, and rerouting some other buses, but I do believe that it's an essential service that City Bus really does need to look at to be able to provide for our citizens, so I would encourage you to look at that in the future, and keep that in mind as you go through your budgets for next year.
Absolutely. That is something that's one of the top concerns, at least in terms of what we hear from elected officials and from hospital officials. You know, the hospital, as you know, moves to the fringe location, creating the new facility, great new facility, and at the time, we secured federal grants under the program called JRC, which allowed us to operate service to the hospital, which we did operate for about three years. Unfortunately, at that time, the density of development out there had not grown to the point that mass transit service could be supported. We were spending about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for the service and only carrying about six riders a day. So, what we are looking at is the development of density in that area. And I think with more offices opening, physician practices, additional housing, that we'll continue to see the demand increase. And at some point, we'll have that perfect tipping point where there's enough demand that will support the operation of mass transit.
Thank you, other questions? Mr. Clinker?
Yes, you talked about the comparison between diesel and compressed natural gas, how about versus hybrid?
Yeah, hybrid, the real issue with hybrid buses, they do lower the number of gallons of diesel fuel used, and we have used that as a strategy to lower our fuel costs for about the last decade. However, the investment in a hybrid bus is significantly higher, and so, what we've not seen is the return on investment. So, our board has decided that CNG is where we're going to go from here.
John, you mentioned a new position, an analyst of some sort, and yet, the wages here, and also a mechanic, the increase was eight point seven percent in the, for the maintenance person, and four point three in the administrative wages. Are any of those wages greater than the two percent the city employees are getting?
So, our, we do have budgeted increases by contract for union employees, so that's going to be within some of the maintenance division.
That is, in terms of arbitration and negotiation.
Yeah, it's, a new contract was just signed at the spring, so I don't know off the top of my head what those percentage rates are, but I can provide that for you. On the administrative side, we budgeted around two to two and a half percent based upon merit. So, our employees are also, the administrative employees go through an evaluation process, and if those employees are deserving of merit pay increases, then they may be provided that. But, the percentage rate will vary depending on that employee's performance, but we did budget it two and a half percent.
I think it's important that you, in the future, because our administrative group negotiates with unions as well, and they still maintain the overall city increase. And I think it's important that you folks do the same thing, because after all, they are all basically city employees.
Yeah, we are, we're a division of municipal, so we're a separate group, but you're right, the perception is, they are certainly public employees.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown.
Well, more like, I guess, a request. I would ask, I would ask that, you know, as soon as you, I guess, in the following years, that you guys look at the expansion of the hours of service, because one of the issues that I hear from the community has to do with hours of service, people who work early and late shifts and such, who don't have cars and have trouble getting to work, and want to use public transportation, and find it, you know, just inconvenient or unavailable. I'm thinking that this is something that can have multiple effects, reduction of traffic, increase revenue for you guys. So, I'd appreciate it if you guys would look at that as soon as possible.
Thank you, yeah, in fact, we do look at that. Our stand of service depends by the bus route, as you know, and for many of our routes, we begin service at five forty-five in the morning on a weekday and run until after midnight. There are other services that run a less robust service or schedule than that. We did just this spring expand service in some areas of the city, including additional Sunday service on the south side of Lafayette. Route six A, six B previously did not operate on Sundays, and that was one of the leading requests that came up in these evaluations. And so, that was implemented in May, and has been very successful. So, you know, we do hear from our riders that they do want more service, and again, it just comes back to the basics of what we're talking about tonight, the budget.
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, John. Any comments from members of the audience on this ordinance regarding City Bus budget?
Earl's ten, ten thirteen, Elizabeth Street. I just have a question, Mr. Messinger. For how long is the late night services going to continue? At one point, I understood that that was, had to be renewed every year.
So, you're referring to the midnight service?
Yeah, yeah.
Could you speak into the microphone, so everyone could hear?
Now, the question had to do with our services that run until or after midnight, and I think what you're referring to is that that had been, that was previously established through a JRC grant, just like the service that ran to the hospital. The difference is that this service performed to the point that then it could be sustained in our operating budget. So, now that service that you're asking about is no longer subject to cancellation because of grant expiration, it's absorbed into our general operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Bradley, before you speak, I would also like to remind you that traditionally, we avoid any statements of political futures or ambitions, so if you could avoid that, go ahead.
Anyway, meanwhile, this one, reminiscent service had to do with the budget, but I just want to commend City Bus on their operation, what they do on seven days a week, almost around the clock. As everybody knows, I ride the bus every day, and what you guys do, and you may have to wait maybe ten extra minutes, but almost clockwork, they're on time, and I got to applaud the whole staff there at City Bus for what they do for everybody. And one thing, I think Ms. Myers pointed out about the hospital, don't go out there. I wish we could get it out to that other hospital, because I hear that all the time. And I thank God now that we can have it over at the other hospital, San Elizabeth. You don't know how many times I hear the patients, oh, I'm so glad that we don't have to walk that far anymore. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience? We'll have a roll call vote then on the ordinance.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
We're going to pass this eight to zero.
Thank you, the ordinance is passed. As a reminder, the last ordinances that we just read, the series of ordinances regarding the city budget and the city salaries, those have already been set for a public hearing for October ninth at five P.M., that we set that at last month's hearing. And then, this one with regard to the City Bus, we'll need a motion to set that, I believe, for a...
For all of them.
All of them.
Okay, so the public hearing's still set for October ninth at five. So, all these ordinances, twenty-four fourteen dash twenty-two through twenty-fourteen dash twenty-six need to be set for a final hearing, and we're suggesting, I believe, October twenty-seventh at five P.M. So, is there a motion to that effect, Mr. Downing? So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to set these ordinances for final adoption then on October twenty-seventh at five P.M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So, these will be addressed for final reading at that date for anyone interested. Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty-fourteen dash twenty-seven.
An ordinance reciting Title X, Animals and Making Changes to Address Appeal Procedures, Repeat Offenders and Free Roaming and Feral Population in the City of Lafayette, Feral Cat Population in the City of Lafayette.
Well, it's a pleasure to counsel, Mr. Campbell.
I'm going for passage of ordinance two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-seven on first reading.
Mr. Reynolds?
I second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, before you, you have an ordinance updating and making some changes to our animal control ordinance that deal with a variety of issues, and, you know, I believe these are necessary changes that we have, that will give animal control personnel and other city personnel the tools and the resources they need to deal with a variety of challenges that they face throughout the day, dealing with the pet population, pet owners, and a variety of different circumstances. And it will also, I believe, give some clarity to our citizens in this regard. And I think this ordinance really is one that works. We have taken a common sense, pragmatic approach to animal control and dealing with some of the issues. There is no doubt that people feel passionate about this issue, there is a lot of emotion with it on both sides, with pets and pets owners and people that have been a victim of some type of dog bite or dog situation, so there is a lot of emotion. But, we've really taken a step back, working with our animal control officers, working with Lieutenant McCoy in the Police Department, who has supervisory responsibility over that division, with, working with the city attorney, Mr. Chosnick, who did some additional research for us on this topic, to try to really bring together an ordinance that will work. And so, it, we have the tools to deal with nuisance animals, dangerous animals, how to deal differently with appeals, and then, as you heard in the description, to deal with the feral cat population and the feral cat colonies that are in the community, and I think we've really come up with a good ordinance. Again, I think it's, we've taken a common sense, pragmatic approach, just something that's enforceable. I think it's important to say, there is no ordinance or no law that will perfectly handle every situation, nor can we prevent every situation from a animal getting loose, out of a yard, someone getting off a leash, or the occasions where we have, where a dog is minding its own business, and somebody walks up and grabs it, and gets bit, or walks up into a private yard and tries to pet a dog. I can assure you, the variety of situations that animal control deals with is significant, but I think this ordinance is a good framework for us to enforce from.
Mr. Chosnick?
As, as the mayor said, the ordinance that is in existence now is actually an ordinance that we created new after quite a few public meetings and lengthy time, but it's, it was 2007. So we've had an opportunity to experience what works with it and where it could use a little bit of fine tuning. And basically, there's not substantial changes, but, but there are a few important changes that were made. One is, we re-certified the whole ordinance to make it fit better with the numbering system to be able to, you know, for animal control people to identify the sections that were important. The second provision is that we added something that made it clear and a little bit, another option for animal control officers to use when they're dealing with nuisance animals. Not dangerous animals, but those animals that get out and create a nuisance in the community. And basically, that section just provides for a nuisance animal agreement, which we've actually already formulated. And it allows the animal control officer, after a second or third, you know, second time, they sign an animal, or a nuisance control agreement, the third time, it's a discretion of that animal control officer whether or not that owner should be an owner of that animal, if they can't be responsible enough. But it's not a dangerous animal, it's, it's one that they lose ownership of, Almost Home can put it in their adoption category. All of the changes also make it clear that when an animal is impounded on the second or third time, it's not going to be released unless it's altered because those are the kind of animals that keep getting out, that keep causing problems. And there is a process, because there's some additional requirements on the responsibility of owners of animals, there's also a, a better process to allow them to appeal those decisions, the animal control officer, as well as, you know, there's a, an existing fine structure. And the animal control officer has the ability to impose that $50 to $250, it can be imposed daily. So we've changed the appeal process to the Board of Works because they meet weekly. What we didn't want to have is an animal impounded and then there's a dispute as to whether it should be without giving that animal's owner, the citizen, an opportunity to appeal and have that decided quickly. And our Board of Works handles lots of appeals of a variety of natures and also a lot of other city things. So that's actually the third major change. And then the one that's a complete addition to our ordinance is the one that provides for, it's, it's the last chapter, it's an entire new chapter, that provides for, you know, the handling of the feral and free roaming cat population that we have in the community. It's something, it's an issue that's been raised for several years by a lot of people that are interested in, in that problem and, and a humane way of trying to address the problem. This particular formula or format for this ordinance was looked at and created by taking other communities that have addressed the problem. And basically, what it does is it, it author, previously, there was no provision for handling the feral and free roaming cats. What this does is allows sponsors that are approved by our animal control people, that have, like Almost Home, for example, to have colony caretakers supervising them and making sure that they're doing all the things that are required, which is basically trapping, neutering, and then releasing the cats. And it'll prevent people from just feeding cats without undertaking the responsibility of making sure they don't continue to overbreed. And so that's kind of the highlights of what we've changed here. And as the mayor indicated, the people that deal with it on a daily basis are in the back of the room and they can provide you more information.
Lieutenant McCoy, you want to start?
Hello. Scott McCoy, Lieutenant, Lafayette Police Department, also another hat that I wear is a Director of Animal Control. But just a real brief comment, animal control, as you guys know it, has only been around for seven years. We've tried to evolve and have done numerous things to try and get animal control up to speed, up to date. One of the things that has not evolved, as the animal control has, are the ordinances. As Mr. Chosnick has pointed out, as well as the mayor, we think that this is a good common sense approach. It deals with a variety of different issues on different levels. It gives the animal control officers a little more discretion, a little bit more power. It also gives a little bit of due process to people who have their animals taken from them. And it can be, you know, the discipline, I guess, or the fate of the dog can be, you know, therefore determined pretty quick on a weekly basis. So we would appreciate your support of, of that new ordinance.
Hi. Josh Clumpy, Animal Control Supervisor. Reference the dangerous and nuisance animal ordinance, like Mr. Chosnick said, not too many changes, other than the Board of Works and introduction of the nuisance animal agreement. What that does is that gives us a new tool to apply to dogs that, like you said, aren't necessarily dangerous in the community, but do pose a problem if they're constantly getting loose, or constant howling and barking and causing, causing a problem. That allows us to issue that agreement. And if they fail, or they'll follow that agreement, then they can get higher fine amounts, confiscation of the animal. With the dangerous animal, if they don't abide by that, they can even face criminal charges if the animal get out and, and harm somebody again. The T and R ordinance, it helps us their trap neuter return. It puts the city in a different direction trying to deal with that feral cat colony. You know, the way we do things now, just proven hasn't worked. Our numbers have stayed the same or gotten higher. People, like Mr. Chosnick said, will feed a cat without, or feed a cat colony without, you know, ensuring that they're not making a bigger colony, which happens a lot and all the time. So being a colony caretaker, it's that caretaker's responsibility, as well as Almost Home and our responsibility to ensure that those cats in that colony are sterilized, returned, ear tipped, vaccinated, and returned to their colony to live out in their entirety. That really puts a positive step in the right direction for that feral cat colony, because there's a lot of them and very few of us.
Couple of questions. Is, number one, what I keep hearing is that the problem with the city's animal control ordinance is the enforcement, or the lack of enforcement. That's what I hear on the streets. So will this give you more ability to enforce it? And have you seen a change in what you've been doing so far?
Yeah, our procedure changed, you know, the ordinance didn't change much, but our procedure changed drastically about a year, year and a half ago regarding dangerous animals. We've gotten a lot stricter. We've given very few second chances. Our, we've had the discretion that even if we see an animal act in aggressive behavior, whether a bite occurred or not, we can still place or will still place a dangerous animal agreement on a dog. And again, they, that, they have to have a stricter, abide by a stricter set of rules. And if they don't do that, which we do follow up on, they will be removed, fined, and again, possibly criminally charged if the dog or animal gets out again and bites some, somebody or another animal.
And then in terms of this ordinance with the, the cat colonies and the neuter spaying of them, is this a budgetary issue? Is this going to cost the city more money? How are these paid for?
Well, it's really going to cost you less. You know, the way, a lot of it is put on the colony sponsors, you know, the Almost Home Humane Society, and they go, they get grants, so they can do spay and neuter for free. Stacy Rogers back there, the animal, or Almost Home Humane Society Director, can far tell you more about the money aspect than I can.
Can we talk a little bit about what somebody has to do to become a colony sponsor?
Caretaker?
Caretaker's register.
Okay. To be a colony caretaker, you have to go through an application process through the sponsor, which would be the Almost Home Humane Society. Once you're approved as a caretaker, that caretaker is in charge of trapping, transporting the cat to and from the vet clinic or Almost Home, depending on which way they're going to go, and then returning that animal to its colony. Okay? So a lot of the responsibility is on the caretaker. It's on the caretaker to provide the food and water and the shelter. So that has, it's not coming out of anybody's budget, but the caretaker who wants to be that caretaker. If you have people out there who enjoy...
He's a volunteer. Yeah. Is this a volunteer or somebody paying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Josh is right. What, it's a little confusing because there are people that are feeding these colonies because they don't, and they don't want the cats euthanized. So the cats continue to populate. So now, if we find somebody feeding a colony, we're going to talk to them, and they have to, to be able to continue to do that, become that sponsor and agree to do the thing, to trap them so they can get fixed. Or they would be in violation to continue feeding them without being a colony sponsor. And this came from Johnson County is where we got most of this, and it's been effective down there at reducing their feral cat population. And there are people out there that's more than willing to do it. The cat lives out its natural life, it can't reproduce, dies naturally, colonies then eventually die off and the population goes down. And there are people that are willing to do that. And people that are, I want to make it clear, people that are feeding them, take them without becoming a sponsor, then are actually in violation of this ordinance. And we've got to do...
And those colonies can be removed at that point. If, if these people are feeding and not doing it correctly, those colonies can be removed from those people and either placed into a different colony. So you have to be a certified caretaker to be able to have a colony. And if you're not, then your colony can be removed and you can be fined.
And the other budget question, last year in 2014, this Council did budget $10,000 to help provide free and low-cost spay and neuters to vet owners that were in need of assistance. A few days ago, I sent all of you the proposal by the Almost Home Humane Society of how that money would be used. I thought it was very well thought out, very well done. Stacy is here, if you'd like an explanation for that as part of this ordinance. But this ordinance itself does not create any additional expense, but you did put that in the budget last year, and I think she's come up with a great plan. So she's here if you want her to talk, or if that's something you want to do later. I have not received any comments back from anyone, so I'm assuming that everyone is happy with the plan that she's put forward.
I have some comments that I received today, so I'll share those with you later after the meeting.
I'm not sure if this is the time to bring this up, we may talk about it later when we talk about moving things to committee. But we've been meeting throughout the year to discuss not only these important changes to the ordinance, but the very important procedural changes you've had within animal control, specifically regarding nuisance and dangerous animals. And it became clear to us that the public needed to be educated on these changes procedurally and ordinance wise. And we had mentioned setting a public forum of sorts, so that we can not only present the changes, but Ed had mentioned last time, possibly taking input from the public as well in regards to clarification in these procedural changes. And that date, I believe, has been set for October 20th?
Yeah, that, that was handed to me, so if this is passed on first reading tonight, then that meeting would be set. It's my understanding with your committee.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that we were very much interested in educating the public on what was required with this ordinance.
I think it's important. And I think it's also important to keep things in perspective of how many incidents per, in relation to how large the population is, and it's actually a very, very small percentage. So did you want to hear from Stacy or...
I don't think that's necessary at this point, Mr. Downing.
I asked you a question about the dog's, dog's license, it has, has to have a license, correct? How many of them that you pick up do not have a license? I mean, what percentage? You know, 10%, 100%?
Oh.
Ballpark.
Uh, higher percentage? How about that? I couldn't give you a percentage, but...
Okay, so we have...
Pretty little, I mean, I can't remember the last number I heard of how many people have registered their animals, but it wasn't very high.
So do we need to approach that?
I'd do that every day.
That would be a nice income, but if you do pick up the dog, does the owner then have to go back and buy a license before he gets the dog back?
Yep, we do do a lot of follow-ups with that.
That's, that's required in our current ordinance before they're surrendered. I think the, the problem is, the dogs that are picked up get licensed. It's the dogs, there are a lot of dogs that aren't licensed until they get picked up.
Yes.
So...
What is the process, Josh, about that with regard to...
Registering an animal?
With what Mr. Downing's saying. If that dog is picked up, do I just say, hey, Josh, can I have the dog back? It's mine?
A lot of times, if I know, say, we find the owner through a microchip, a tag, or general knowledge, we'll take that, try to take it back home, first of all, and then we'll ask for all that identification, rabies vaccine, city license. And if they don't have those, then we give them a certain time period to get that done. I'll be back in two weeks. You know, you need to get the rabies vaccine, you get the city registration. And a lot of times, they do do it.
A lot of times?
Mm-hmm. And if they get it back from the shelter...
Shouldn't they do it every time?
I don't know. Otherwise, they can take it.
And what is the cost of that ticket?
It can range from $50 to $200.
Okay, good.
So you can spend $50 on a ticket or...
I think if we are first time to register, $50.
What's the cost to get a dog's license?
If it's unaltered, $40. If it is altered, $5.
And if you're over 62, it's free if your dog's old.
And you're fine.
Any other questions, these gentlemen? It is a good opportunity, though, I think, to remind the public that we do have that requirement for everyone who has a dog.
Absolutely. Yeah, and every, every, just about every call we go on.
For animal, yeah.
Yep. It's just getting those people to put the tag on. It's tough.
I did have one of the questions from I, what you asked about the enforcement. The ACOs actually handle about 80% of all animal calls that occur within the city, so there's very little interaction with the police department. And I think sometimes we can almost get too specialized in what we do in the police department and think that it's somebody's, somebody else's issue to deal with and that kind of thing. We have made a concerted effort to do some departmental training. Josh has been exposed to the department in a variety of different ways in the last year and a half to make sure that the guys on the department understand that there's only three of them for a city of 70,000, roughly 140 officers who can do about the same thing when they have the opportunity and the time to do so. So the ACO is handling 80% of all animal calls, it's pretty outstanding, really, considering.
Thank you.
Do you have any protection against these wild, whatever kind of animal that attack, might attack you?
Uh, I've got, you know, one of the tools we have is our control stick. Obviously, you've seen that probably on TV, the pole with a noose on the end of it. Rarely do we get out of our vehicles with that to go up to somebody's doors. We just acquired bite sticks and most of us do carry some kind of utility knife.
A utility what?
Utility knife. But other than that, no. That's what we have in our building.
Is there anything out there that would protect you when you're dealing with some of these animals? I mean, with human beings, we've got the police, electric guns or something.
It's, it's, it's an interesting point that you bring up. I mean, and aside from the animals, the ACOs are dealing with the same people that the officers deal with on a daily basis. And as you probably know from your experiences, some people can get pretty, pretty excited when you're dealing with their animal, if you're threatening to take their animal. So these guys wearing the green have... So, the challenges for them are to be a little more, uh, verbal and use, use their brains as opposed to knowing that they can take somebody to jail, you know, and, and put it into whatever the issue is. So, uh, it is a challenge. I mean, it's something that we deal with on a daily basis and we talk about frequently.
I'd hate to match brains with some of those dogs, so. My hat's off to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other questions from council members? Any comments from the, uh, audience, members of the public on this particular ordinance? All right, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Hi.
Williamson?
Hi.
Downing?
Hi.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the ordinance has passed. Moving to ordinance 2014, what, that's 28?
You're gonna do the committee assignment now?
Oh, yes, that has to be, uh, set for a-
No, doesn't have to, just, I think-
Refer.
Refer, I'm referring it to, um, the Public, Public Health Committee. Ms. Allers Meyer, 'cause the goal is, is to have a public meeting then between now and the next meeting.
And that, the date's already been established, I believe, is October 20th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. So, any of you out there that are interested in this and seeing, um, more information about it, I encourage you to attend that meeting of, um, the Public Health Committee of the City Council for review. And it's here in our chambers. Very good. Okay. Ordinance 2014 dash 28.
An amendment to section 3.05.020 and section 3.05.040 of the Lafayette Municipal Code for Tanning to open burning.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Clinker.
I'm over here, 2014 dash 28.
Mr. Heidi. Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to consider 2014 dash 28. Is there someone to present this ordinance?
Good evening, Chief Richard Gore, Lafayette Fire Department. What we have, uh, in front of you is a, a kind of a minor change to the open burning ordinance. It actually gives us or describes that we have the authority to extinguish a, uh, fire that, um, that we go and investigate and we find that it may be, um, outside of the parameters for open burning, or it may be a nuisance, so it, it, uh, kind of a minor change to that. We, uh, we typically get two calls for open burning, or just a report that there's open burning, and the other might be a nuisance. So, um, what we've, we're finding was that there were some gray areas that we just wanted to define a little bit better, gives our, our firefighters, um, uh, the ability to go out there and kinda make that decision, uh, in the field if they need to put this out or not. Um, so it was a pretty, pretty minor change in that. Um, there's, there are essentially two different types. You can, you can have a open burning in your backyard in an improved container, that's where we get most of the confusion, what that container looks like. And then, uh, there are ceremonial recreational, uh, bonfires that you might have at a high school and things like that. They're, they're two completely separate, uh, things that, uh, we will get called on. Uh, most of what we get, uh, alerted up about is, uh, just, uh, open burning in somebody's, uh, backyard and, um, that they're having a small fire out in the back. And, and like I said, when our, when our firefighters get there, they, they look at the container itself, see if it meets, uh, the ordinance, and then, um, if it's, if it's they're burning the right material inside the container itself, and there's other rules that they have to follow, um, it has to be maintained, somebody has to be there, they have to have the ability to extinguish it and things like that. If they're outside of that, then, then we'll extinguish it. And we do have a finding process if, if, uh, becomes a problem, if we're, uh, subject to return to this location, uh, after we've, uh, just alerted them of maybe that they're outside of that, and then we do have a finding process also. Any questions?
I'm surprised you don't have the authority to put the thing out.
Just didn't really say that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
Thanks, Lewis.
Yeah, Jules, is this gonna solve, uh, one of the issues we have right now?
Well, it, uh, it, uh, better defines that, uh, for us in there.
Well, I guess the, one of the issues, we've got this to the point where, uh, you know, is it a nuisance, uh, or is it not a nuisance? Uh, you and I both know that we've had several of these a long time ago, uh, when neighbors don't get along with neighbors if they're using wood chips in their grill, they call. So, you know, this is-
So, what, some of the, uh, one of the things that we've done over the past month or so concerning the issue you're talking about is really we just met with, uh, uh, city attorneys to really just get a better understanding of what that nuisance, the definition of that nuisance is, that we, we can, uh, when we're out in the field, make a better decision. So, it was really defined, um, by council, uh, better for us what that looks like.
What, what the, I mean, the, there's really just, uh, this modification is very simple. One is, it just says, uh, that it didn't in our other ordinance, but if there is open burning in violation of the chapter, the fire department can put it out. I mean, it was presumed that they, they should be able to, but it really didn't say that. So, we added that in the one section. And the other thing that we did is we clarified that the, that even if it is in compliance with, you know, certain regulations in terms of the right kinda material and fire pit and so forth, if in the discretion of the fire department, it either creates a fire hazard, pollution problem, or endangers the health, safety, or comfort of the general public. And, and the purpose of that is generally nuisance is, you know, what one person's nuisance is, isn't necessarily another person. So, it's a nuisance to the general public to, you know, anything that all of us in, in our common sense would say, "Yeah, that's, that's a nuisance to more than just one particular person." So, it, it gives them a little clarity to determine when they should put something out, when they shouldn't, and makes it clear that they have the right to put it out, if it's a danger or a nuisance to the general public.
So, one unhappy neighbor can't have it put out if everything is-
Well, I mean, i- if it's not a nuisance to, you know, the general public, no. No, I mean, the, the intent, unless it violates other things, but that's the discretion that the fire department will have, is determining whether this particular fire, even if it meets all the other standards, has a pollution issue, has a issue of potential danger, or a nuisance to the general public, to the neighborhood, to, um, and, and I think that is still discretionary, but it makes it a little clearer.
And we've, um, what we've done inside the fire, uh, department itself is really done some training on what does that look like? So, we're consistent with everybody that goes out there. That was one of the things that we found was that some of the, uh, firefighters that were responding to, you know, were, um, um, in not being as consistent with what does that look like. So, we're, we're gonna, um, define that within our SOPs also, so they, they, uh, can make, you know, good judgment every time on that. Some of it obviously depends on weather conditions. Uh, this is, this is the same material, we're talking about this, if they're following the, the certain regulations, it's really the same material you'd be burning in your fireplace.
Well, that's where, that's where I'll be going. You know, we had some issues, uh, several years ago, these people were building these outdoor fireplaces that were grills, and both using the fireplaces and the, uh, little grills, uh, burning some type of wood, and we were getting complaints when they put these outside barbecues at, and yet they couldn't do, they're doing the same thing. So, where are we, you know, are we gonna clean this up?
We think this is a, a good start to help us, you know, uh-
What, what it does is it, it, it makes it more of a general nuisance. I mean, if, if, you know, the city's gonna say no fireplaces, then I think there'd be a lot of people complaining. So, I mean, I think that to the extent that it meets all the other standards, just because one person, uh, doesn't like it, they'll have the opportunity to say, "Well, you know, we're sorry, it might be offensive to ya, but it's not a nuisance to the public, it's meeting all the other codes." It's not any different that having a fire in the fireplace. I think that's-
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Is, is looking for that ability to make that discretion, and this clarifies that the nuisance needs to be a public nuisance, not what one individual considers a nuisance. And, and there's actually a, a lot of, uh, case law that describes a public nuisance and distinguishes it from a, from a private nuisance.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, you mentioned approved containers, can you just remind the public what those are?
It is a container that has, um, sides and a bottom, and will, uh, contain the, the ember itself. So, if you've been to Minars or Lowes and you'll see those metal containers, that's a really good picture of what that looks like. You can, you can, uh, you can make your own, but it literally has to have sides and a bottom to it and a screen to, to keep those embers down when they're, when you got a fire.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from the public about this ordinance, open burning? Any other comments from council? A roll call vote.
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Hi.
Williamson?
Hi.
Downing?
Hi.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the ordinance has passed. Now, we'll move on to a series of ordinances regarding historic districts. Ordinance 2014 dash 29.
An amendment to ordinance 2010 dash zero four, inclusion of certain property in the local centennial dis- historic district in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
It's a pleasure, the council. Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2014 dash 29.
Ms. Allers Meyer? Thank you, it's been moved and seconded for, to consider 2014 dash 29. Yes, sir.
My name's Daniel Walker with the, um, Economic Development Department Planner and Project Manager. Um, before you is an ordinance to amend an existing local historic district. Um, this historic district went for approval before the Lafayette Historic Preservation Commission in August. Um, it involves the designation of 602, 603, 609, North Fifth Street, along with 509 Brown Street. The 509 Brown Street property is, um, the Midwest Reynolds site, which is controlled by, uh, Centennial Neighborhood and Investment Group, uh, Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association, and Lafayette Redevelopment Commission. And it's, it's, it's Michael Hunt, who is a petitioner, um, for 602 North Fifth Street. He has done a great job in restoring his historic home, so I'd like to invite him up to speak to this district.
Thank you. Dan, you can move that mic up, too, you don't have to bend down to speak to it.
I work for everybody else.
Good evening, I'm Michael Hunt. My wife, Phyllis, and I live at 602 North Fifth Street in historic Centennial Neighborhood. Um, we appreciate, uh, the city council's support of Centennial and other older neighborhoods. I must relate a totally, um, unimaginable coincidence tonight. This council meeting is the 20th anniversary of the 1994 council meetings where Centennial's bid to be the second local historic district in Lafayette was defeated. It was a very acrimonious situation. Mr. Meyer and Campbell, I think you all can recall, y'all are quoted, as I am, in the 1994 newspaper reports of that situation. The late founding owner of Midwest Reynolds was our fiercest, fiercest antagonist. He railed that he didn't need preservation, and he got a dark brown taste in his mouth whenever government was talking. He and other opponents consistently referred to big government and property rights. These assertions received loud applause. The neighborhood lost big time. In my 21 years in the neighborhood, this frankly has been my most unpleasant experience. But, time passed, and we chipped away. We and other neighbors made big time development investments in preservation and restoration of our properties. Investments I would venture to say that relative to the individual's net worth were much larger than any apartment developer. So, we come here tonight experiencing even more craziness, the height of irony. I and nine others now own one-third of our former nemesis property. A property that is part of tonight's inclusion in the local historic Centennial District. And a property that RLLC, in a unique partnership with the city government, is developing as owner-occupied housing. I don't know if this relationship smacks of big government, small government, or just right government. But contrary to our opponents 20 years ago, I'll take whatever kinda government you want it to call it. We look forward to additional investments and developments in Historic Centennial. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to-
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for that historical perspective. And I don't think I wanna be reminded of the courts, do you, uh, Mr. Clinker?
Sure. One other thing, I'd just like to note that, um, 602, 603, and 609 North Fifth Street are all listed out as outstanding. In outstanding condition, so.
Yes. Any, uh, questions from, uh, council members? All right, thank you. Any comments from the, uh, members of the audience on this particular ordinance regarding, um, 602 and 603 North Fifth?
609 and 506.
506.
Yes.
609, yeah. Seeing none? Any other comments from council? A roll call vote.
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Hi.
Williamson?
Hi.
Downing?
Hi.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the ordinance has passed. Moving on to ordinance 2014 dash 30.
An amendment to ordinance number 2010 dash 11, establishing a local Walnut Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
It's a pleasure, the council.
I move for passage of ordinance 2014 dash 30 on first reading.
Mr. Downing?
I second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded for 20, to consider 2014 dash 30. Okay.
Um, this is a single-site local historic district approved by the Lafayette Historic Preservation Commission in August as well. Um, it is in the Walnut neighborhood, it is noted as contributing, and, um, as this home was renovated with federal funds granted to Habitat for Humanity by the city of Lafayette, we put it in our, um, agreement for award of those funds that they would have to apply for historic, uh, local historic district status.
Thank you, any questions from council members on this ordinance?
What would happen to this property if it were not a historic, um, structure?
Uh, there's kinda two parts to that question. We require it in order for home, home funds to be awarded, so it may have, if they were not awarded home funds, uh, it would fall further into disrepair, um, and then eventually, I don't know what the future of that might be.
Will this ensure that those home funds will be available to you?
Um, the home funds have been expended to renovate the home. It will ensure that the home, uh, remains in an-
Continue to meet some requirements, right?
Right. External changes, uh, must go through historic preservation review, that's the only thing.
Any other questions? Comments from the members of the audience on 2014 dash 30? Seeing none, a roll call vote on the ordinance?
Heidi?
Hi.
Clinker?
Hi.
Reynolds?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Allers Meyer?
Hi.
Williamson?
Hi.
Downing?
Hi.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the ordinance has passed. Ordinance 2014 dash 31.
An amendment to ordinance 2010 dash 11, establishing a local Lower Lincoln Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
I move, we hear and approve ordinance 2014 dash 31.
Very good. Moved and seconded to approve 2014 dash 31.
Okay. This is another single-site, uh, local historic district in the Lincoln neighborhood. It is noted as contributing, um, it was passed in September by the Lafayette Historic Preservation Commission, and, uh, this is the first home that was renovated using, or with Faith C, or, yeah, with Faith CDC. So, it's a new partnership between the city and Faith, uh, Faith Church. And again, the same, um, requirement was applied to this, uh, grant of funds. Home funds were granted to Faith CDC, therefore they were required to apply for local historic
I didn't hear that. I remember there's such a thing as age discrimination.
Any other questions by council members? Comments by members of the audience regarding this particular ordinance? For a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hollis Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Moving on to ordinance 2014 dash 32.
An amendment to man, ordinance number 2010 dash 11, establishing a local Hart Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
It's a pleasure to counsel. Mr. Clinker.
I'm here. I'm moving here, ordinance 2014 dash 32.
Mr. Heidi.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the final local historic district approval we're requesting. It was approved by the Lafayette Historic Preservation Commission in September. It is a single site in the St. Lawrence McAllister neighborhood. It is listed as notable, and it also has home funds, and therefore it's required to go through the same process with being designated as local historic district.
Any questions by council members? None? Mr. Campbell, you want to-
Yeah, maybe I'm a little puzzled about all of these in general. From the standpoint of the first ones that we saw, Mr. Hunt's home and Mr. Riff's home, I can see very easily the historic value of them. And I guess the why? What is the why of all of these? I mean, I understand theirs is a cottage-type of home, is it not, Mr. Hunt? Is that what you call it, your home? You're getting too complicated for me. But is this, are we going to see more of these individual homes? I've not seen it before, I guess.
We have had these before.
Yeah, but not, maybe not seven of them in a row.
Probably not.
True. This is two Historic Preservation Commission agenda items put into this meeting, so there's a couple more than usual on here. Our hope is that these single districts can later be expanded further out into the neighborhoods that they exist within. As to why, we'd like to protect the investment that the city has made in these homes, but also they do qualify.
You can't use CDG funds, for example, as a tear down to a company you think, why? If it's over 40 years old, because it considers having historicity?
Sure.
So if there's kind of a tie associated with the two, maybe you forget the full fight, historic, or timeframe within their required. So we're just making sure we're following the findings in that case, just to protect the investment.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments? Can we make-
No, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need a vote.
We need a vote. All right. Roll call vote in on 2014 dash 32.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hollis Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. All right, moving on to resolutions. Resolution 2014 dash 11.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application by Taton Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC for property tax abatement in Taton Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC Phase One.
Well, it's a pleasure to counsel. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. President, I move for passage of resolution 2014 dash 11 on first and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, here tonight to ask for your support on this resolution for Taton Lyle. As you know, they're an important community partner with here in our city with their two manufacturing plants. Over the last several years, we've been very fortunate that they have continued to make significant capital investments here in our community that not only helps create jobs but helps retain jobs, they've also added significant environmental considerations to those upgrades, and their employees and their company are good partners in community events and giving back to the community. Tonight, this resolution here represents another opportunity for continued investment at Taton Lyle that we certainly hope will add and give us a chance to maybe even have some additional investment down the road. As you know, they are very good paying jobs out of that facility, and they certainly add to our tax base that allows us to provide basic needs, basic city service, and public safety to our community. So I'm here to throw my support behind this resolution. At this time, I would invite Chris Olson, who is here representing Taton Lyle, to explain to you a little bit further about the project, and then we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Members of council, Mayor, thank you very much. My name is Chris Olson. I work for Taton Lyle, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here today on behalf of our request for property tax abatements for a new project Taton Lyle is considering. With me today is Dan Kirk, who is our plant manager for the South Plant where we're considering the project to be implemented. Due to the increased demand, the company is looking to expand our production of Crystal Enfractos. Crystal Enfractos is a corn-based sweetener used in a variety of food and beverages like sport drinks, yogurt, and an example would be this powdered lemonade drink that I think you're all familiar with, just to give you an idea of what it might be used for. Taton Lyle is fortunate to have the number-one market position in the world for Crystal Enfractos, and the South Plant is one of our locations producing the ingredient. We're in the final stages of putting together our business case for the expansion, so that is why we're here today to support our request for property tax abatements, to help justify the project for Lafayette. The project would actually be done in two phases, so that's why there are actually two requests that we have before the council. The first phase would be $15 million, is for equipment such as process tanks, pumps, and piping. The second phase would involve both engineering work and additional equipment. Depending on how the detailed engineering design would turn out, the second phase would cost somewhere between $30 and $50 million. The second phase would also include the addition of eight full-time employees. This project, combined with the investment we announced earlier this year, which the council also supported, demonstrates a strong commitment to the local community and reinforces the importance of Lafayette to Taton Lyle as a location with more production capacity than any other single location we have anywhere in the world. Thank you for your consideration, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chris. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Clinker.
I see in the application it says 214 retained, but didn't say anything about additional, so the eight is what you expect but not committed to in the abatement?
Yeah, the 214 is how many people we have there now.
Right.
The additional employees would come in the second phase of the project.
Okay.
Do you still have any affiliation with the Chicago Bears?
The question is, do we have any affiliation with the Chicago Bears? Only in winning seasons. No, we, actually, we have one small connection. We have an agreement with the Bears around the name of the mascot, Staley the Bear, so we have, but that is the only connection. We wish we still had an ownership interest.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments of council? Are there any comments from members of the audience on this request by Taton Lyle? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hollis Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. We need a motion to set this resolution for public hearing on November 3 at 7:00. Mr. Campbell.
I think it's 7:01.
7:01. Mr. Clinker.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Matter is set for public hearing then next month. Next resolution, 2014 dash 12.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application by Jane's Investments LLC, DBA Lafayette Automotive Supply for property tax payment. Jane's Investments LLC, DBA Lafayette Automotive Supply.
Mr. Reynolds.
I'd hear an approved 2014 dash 12.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is a resolution before you. It's one of those fun ones to bring, to bring a local business before you this evening. It's had just an absolutely stellar reputation in this community and has continued to grow. I've had some time to speak with these gentlemen, and really remarkable story in our community, and they do a lot more than I think anybody realizes how much business and what their reach is with their auto supply business. They are looking to expand. That's always a good thing for us, add a new facility that will allow them to do the expansions they need, improve their logistics, improve their efficiencies, and give them the opportunity to continue to grow, to be competitive in that marketplace that they find themselves. And so we are thrilled that they are here tonight. Again, it's one of those great stories of a business that started small many, many years ago and has continued to grow under great leadership, customer service, and dedication to their community. So tonight, Ron Clinker, Ron, are you going to be the spokesman? Ron will speak a little bit about the project to you, and then be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and thanks for your time this evening. You've had a lot of it here, so. As Mayor said, I'm Ron Clinker, and I'm employed by Lafayette Auto. Pat and John James, the owners, are here this evening. We're asking the council for your support for a five-year tax abatement. We're an 85-year-old local company, three generations, and we're a distributor of wholesale auto parts. We're looking at building a 42,000-square-foot facility at 1501 Kepner Drive. That's off of McCarty Lane by Bennett's Greenhouse. What that will do is help us to, logistically, I think many of you probably know that we're a couple blocks from here on Fourth Street, and with the growth and with the logistics that we have, that's going to greatly help us. The project will allow us to remain competitive, provide continued growth for our company, and the key thing is it's going to allow us to retain 68 employees locally. 28 of those employees are full-time. We will add an additional minimum of two full-time employees and one part-time employee. Again, we're not really sure exactly where that will lead, but we want to be on the conservative part of that for the process. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the project.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Would you go over again the location? Is this to the, which way?
Front location, or would you like to know where we're?
Where the new Bennett's?
It's at 1501 Kepner Drive, which is on the front of McCarty Lane in front of the-
Right across from Cap Park.
It's the last lot being developed in the LUR subdivision out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, question, council, not Ron. You can hear the beautiful last name there that he mentioned. I don't think, do you have ownership, or if second cousin wants to move, I think I don't have to excuse myself, do I?
No.
I actually thought of that before, and I thought, it probably won't be a good one.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? Any comments from members of the audience on this tax abatement request? A roll call vote?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hollis Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. All right. Thank you for everyone's patience. We've gone through a lot of topics. We do have to set this one, though, for a public hearing as well for November 3 at 7:02. It's a pleasure to counsel, Mr. Campbell.
So I'll move.
Mr. Clinker.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's set for next month then for the public hearing. Reports of standing committees? I do not believe there are any. Reports of special committees? There are none at this time. We would probably have a report from the Public Health Committee next month on the animal control issue. Report by the mayor? Miscellaneous and new business? We do have a budget workshop scheduled for October 20 at 5:00 at Council Chambers. That's the hour before the special meeting for the animal control meeting that the Public Health Committee will be having. So anyone interested in coming back and listening more about our budget, please come on the 20th at 5:00. Reports of councilmen? And reports of city councilmen? Public comment? This is the opportunity, this is the time in our agenda that we open the floor up to anyone in the audience to come and address us with any concerns. Are there any members of the audience that would like to address us? I do remind you that traditionally, we do keep you to a three-minute limit.
I just heard a couple, oh, Earl Stanton, 1050 North Fifth Street. I read in the paper and heard on the news that Duke Energy will be doing some upgrades to their electrical systems, including substations. I wondered if anybody knew if we were involved and how. Would we be getting one of the substations? Be that-
I don't think so, Earl. I do not notify by effect, and the gas company gave the upgrade, instead of doing that. I haven't seen this issue where you try to use a substitution.
All right. I'm just interested in, you know, our problem is fixed, but we were involved in a recent problem with our cable service where the, our pole was, the equipment on the pole was being piggybacked and was interrupting signals to certain channels. I wondered if that was a widespread issue, because I think the technician made a comment to my stepmom that there had been issues in the area. I wondered if anybody had heard anything about that.
I don't recall hearing anything from the cable, is this Comcast?
Comcast.
Yeah.
Our problem got fixed. It took the summer, because we didn't call enough times to get it taken care of, or order. Recently, I learned that, and I don't know if anybody else knows this yet, but the employees do, so, I do not work for them. Does anybody know anything about the sale of TRW and how that's going to affect the community?
I've not heard anything about that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
You are the only person in the city that's ever had a problem with Comcast television. Anyone else for a public comment?
Seeing none, Mr. Campbell.
Jerm.
Mr. Heidi.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Herr Jerm. Thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening.
I don't think that's the-